Next, we have our study session item, the 2019 Bond Preliminary Phase One Plan. Dr. Swift?
Thank you. President Johnson and trustees and members of the community were very pleased this evening to be able to spend some time in focused study together, considering a preliminary version of our Phase One Plan for the 2019 Bond. Trustees, I do want to give a shout out to our Gilbane team. You recall that they work behind the scenes to support the implementation of the bond, and they are joining us remotely this evening, particularly Stephanie Corona and Kevin Stansbury and members of their team who work alongside Emile Lautzana and Jill Minnick and Bernard Rice, who are all here with us on this facility's endeavor as well. So with that, I think we'll jump in. I will just offer trustees a brief introduction because Mr. Lautzana really has the heft of this work that we'll look at this evening. I want to thank the trustees for your work. We've been in small group conversations, really working to bring forward a plan that aligns directly to the campaign commitments that we made back in 2019, and also aligns directly with our facilities' Condition Index study that the Board authorized back in 2017 and occurred over 2018-19. Trustees, you know well, but just a reminder for our community, we are the fourth-largest district in Michigan, covering an area of 125 square miles. Folks don't realize it, but it is the city of Ann Arbor and parts of eight surrounding townships that we cover, really encompasses 35 physical properties, 32 of those are schools, well over 3 million square feet and more than 700 acres. This is what we're responsible for as a Board and as a community, and we appreciate the support of the community for Ann Arbor Public Schools. Let's take a look at the core values. We use these values every day as we approach our work, and so you know them by heart, but beginning with our critical mission, which is achieving educational excellence and keeping our children safe and whole and healthy and ensuring their well-being, and doing that in a socially mindful, a social justice approach of equity, opportunity, and access for every child. Our vision is that regardless of a child's zip code or their gender, the color of their skin, or the position of their parents, that in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, they will receive a quality, top-quality education. We also are mindful of that bedrock of our work, which is responsible stewardship, and we see that in the public funds, trustees, that you govern and that we manage as a team together over environmental resources and that community trust in our work to take care of our schools. We know that we are obligated to deliver quality, durable, on-time, and on-budget work to enhance our physical properties. That's a value that we drive every day, and thank you, trustees, for the questions that you ask and the work that we do in committees and behind the scenes to ensure that we're operating as responsible stewards. The final kind of highlight of our values that we'll share is that highly engaged Ann Arbor community. These are our community schools. And trustees, you've seen the results of our listen-and-learn conversations and data year after year, coming back to that primary value in the community of the neighborhood quality neighborhood school, serving preschool through 12th grade students right in our own familiar neighborhoods. And we think of those schools in light of this bond for today, for tomorrow, and for future generations of Ann Arbor's students. You recognize this slide. These four cornerstones of the 2019 Bond commitments really came out of those core values that we just highlighted, that value of teaching and learning, the tradition of academic excellence, which is quality teaching and learning, and the best programming anywhere, that value of safety, health, and well-being, and certainly a focus on the whole child. And we hear and we reiterate that value and that approach to education in Ann Arbor. We also hold that sustainability in being environmentally responsible and ensuring that the infrastructure of our district operates in an environmentally responsible way, and then ensuring our effective and efficient operations side of the district, that's our technology, our transportation, our food service, our replacement and renewal processes for furnishings, and musical instruments, and all the stuff that we use inside our schools. Trustees, you know well that we're not starting this work tonight. Tonight is a continuation of many steps that we've taken over years. Back in 2017, those members here this evening who were on the Board at that time remember well that the Board's desire was to get a quantitative report of the condition of our overall facilities in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And so we commissioned an outside expert to complete an independent facilities' condition assessment. It took a little over a year to complete, and we shared those results in 2019 with the Board and community. Those are still posted on our website, so anyone who's interested, there is a book published for every single school in the district. You remember, trustees, that the number on that was fairly shocking, about $823 million in needed repairs, work to catch up and keep up on our buildings. And so that, we completed that report. All of that's been published and shared with the community. Last November, just over a year ago, we were so grateful that our community supported the capital bond. That total amount was approximately $1.4 billion, because when you take the renewal of our campuses and then add on the sustainability components for buses and for equipment and for furnishings and for musical instruments, it brought us to that amount of $1.4 billion. We take that vote of support very seriously, and so we've worked over these months to align this plan that you'll see this evening, and it is in a preliminary form. Trustees, we're looking forward to being with you all this evening and two more times during December, and then January through March, being out in the community. Obviously, those will likely be on a virtual status, but we'll be engaging with our community. But over this past year, we've done quite a bit of preliminary work with the trustees and with our bond committee. Trustees, back in May, I believe it was, she selected the bond program management firm, that's the Gilbane team that we referred to earlier. We also have put together the fundamentals of a preliminary plan that is aligned directly to the commitments we made and to the assessment, the external assessment of building needs that we received. In June, we facilitated the sale of the first series of bonds, that was $151 million. And then that brings us to this evening, really beginning this public discussion of a preliminary Phase One Bond Plan that will cover approximately 10 years, 2020 to 2030. So it is the first chapter of this about a 30-year endeavor of our 2019 Bond. So with that, just a few highlights of the progress that we made prior to this bond. We were so grateful for the community's support back in 2017 to support an increase of our sinking fund. Prior to 2017, the sinking fund was not sufficient to maintain and to take care and keep our buildings caught up with what they needed to be fully in good condition. And as you know, trustees, our average age now of 65 years, our buildings needed quite a bit. So we've used that sinking fund increase from 2017, as well as a bond from 2015 that our community supported at no additional cost to our taxpayers. That was achieved through a refinance and taking advantage of historically lower interest rates at that time. We gained about $32 million. We've begun the process of catching up. So just a few highlights of that work. Trustees, you'll be very familiar with this work because it's the work you've overseen in committee meetings and in study sessions and in public meetings of the Board, public engagement meetings with the community over previous years. We worked on our systems and infrastructure, paving and roofing, HVAC systems that needed significant work, and air conditioning so that we could facilitate year-round programming. In addition, we've looked at indoor and outdoor active spaces. You remember, these trustees, we've put in quite a lot of very much-needed gym floor replacements and refinishing, new playgrounds at every single elementary K5 or Y5 building and in K8 building in the district. So approximately 21 new playgrounds. We appreciated the support of our community engagement advisory groups in these areas to ensure, we know that the elementary playground is the center of the neighborhood for young children and families, and we're so proud of that work over recent years to ensure that every playground is in at every school, and those playgrounds had community and parent and student and staff engagement through that process. More recently, replacing the stadium turf at our three comprehensive high schools, our running tracks and our tennis courts, they were all in very significant need of repair, and they've been completely refurbished. And you can see, these are not downloaded pictures from somebody else's district. These are actually photos of the work that's been accomplished over recent years. In addition, we've done several significant project remodels. Trustees, this is like a who's who of the projects that we've been engaged on. H2 Steam at Northside was expanded and enhanced significantly over a three-year period. Pathways Campus was remodeled. Allen Elementary, what was prompted by the flood that that building experienced, but a complete remodel of Allen Elementary. Mitchell Elementary received a new wing back in 2017, and then most recently, refurbishing and upgrades and significant project at Bryant &amp; Patton Gill. In addition, we wanted to add on to elementary schools where we were short of space for students, and trustees, our Board elected to use a modular enhancement of freestanding classroom additions so that we could test and prove the need for those additional seats. We were able to do that at a lower cost this way and ensure that our growth remained steady and solid. So you can see all of the campuses here where we've added the freestanding classroom additions. They are air-conditioned, they are large classroom spaces, large windows, and as you can see, they've become a great part of the buildings that have them and have allowed us to relieve a lot of crowding and to ensure adequate space in some of our most pressed neighborhoods' schools. So as you can see, we have completed quite a lot of work, considering that we were working with the limited sinking fund and a small 2015 bond enhancement. But during this time, our intention was to deliver these projects on budget and on time, to engage with our community and to ensure an enhanced student experience around the district in some key and critical areas. We're so grateful for the support of our community, I'm grateful for the support of the Board, and for all of the work that we were able to accomplish within our sinking fund and our 2015 bond. About two years ago, though, trustees, we began to have serious discussions that our needs, as described in that facility conditions index, our needs for growth, and our vision to reimagine schools, really did far exceed what our sinking fund provided. So it was about two years ago that we shifted our vision as a district, as a Board, and as a community to really move beyond that catch-up and keep-up to really look to a more long-term future. And we use this slogan, "Our kids, our schools, and our future." We shifted to that long-range planning with that idea that's on that slide with the quote on it, that idea that we would be builders, builders and engineers of a future, Ann Arbor. We know that we have 35 beautiful buildings and properties and woods and park properties associated with our schools, and we have those because generations before us planned ahead and made sacrifices and planned for this day today. And I so appreciate, trustees, that you took on the task and were courageous with this idea of planting trees under which, under whose shade we will not sit. And so this 2019 Bond is really a completely different focus than our sinking fund and our preliminary endeavors were. This one is really about re-envisioning those four cornerstones of the 2019 Bond, creating a teaching and learning space that is future-oriented, ensuring that the safety, health, and well-being. When this bond was passed, we knew nothing about COVID, and yet we realize now how important that safety, health, and well-being is to the integral design of the building. The Board began with the 8,000 policy series that demonstrates our deep commitment to environmental sustainability in achieving our critical mission of educating children. And then we knew, because we had been through times when our bus fleet was aged and there were infrastructure issues in the district, and we knew we wanted to plan ahead for all of the systems in the district to be sustainable, so that fourth cornerstone of efficient and effective support systems. So with this bond, we are planting trees under whose shade we will not sit. We are planning not only for our children and our grandchildren, who will be educated in these schools, but we're planning beyond that for generations of children to ensure that the enhanced learning experience for our students, for our staff, for our families, and for our community is an experience that will stand the test of time for future generations. So it's with that shift in our thinking, a 2019 Bond Phase One Preliminary Plan, which will span the years of 2020 to 2030. It's with that in mind that Mr. Emile Lautzana, Executive Director of our Bond Program, and Assistant Superintendent Jill Minnick, who oversees finance and facilities in our district, and Bernard Rice, Executive Director of Facilities, so he's the guy that takes care of our buildings. These three individuals will be with us tonight for this study session, and I'm so proud to welcome them. And President Johnson, if that's okay, we'll just launch into the plan, or if we need to pause, we're here to serve at the will of the Board.
Absolutely. Trustees, if you don't have any questions, I think it's okay for Mr. Lautzana to quit starting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lautzana.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Swift, President Johnson. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Ann Arbor community. I appreciate Dr. Swift's words about the generational nature of this bond investment. As many of you will remember from the campaign, the original five oldest buildings in Ann Arbor were built in a rapid succession in the 1920s following World War II. And then there was a massive building program undertaken following World War II when 20 buildings were constructed in very short order, sometimes opening two buildings in one year. That infrastructure is very old at this point, and it's our generation's turn to invest for future generations. And so I'm pleased to be here to present the 2019 Bond Preliminary Phase One Plan for the first 10 years of the bond program. We'll start by reviewing some of the bond campaign commitments, and then we'll launch into an overview of the plan and some of the major components of the plan. We'll look at a map depicting some of the staging that the plan proposes. We'll look at investment timelines by sector of the city and by individual school levels. We'll review upcoming community engagement opportunities, some supporting documents that we'll be developing, and our next steps. So our campaign commitments, some of the language from the campaign literature, I'm not going to read this, but there's a whole portion of the APS website that still has all of the campaign literature and all of the commitments that were made available for the public to review. And on November 5, 2019, the voters approved the bond program. This is from the ballot. This language is a little bit opaque sometimes, but essentially, it's laying out the allowable expenses that are under this bond program, and it includes constructing additions, remodeling, building new schools, buying equipment such as musical instruments, as well as other infrastructure needs like buses, paving, roofing, et cetera. As Dr. Swift reviewed, there were four goal areas in the bond program, and we're just going to look at a little deeper into what some of those areas entail. So in the teaching and learning goal area, we establish key themes, and then what the supporting infrastructure would be to achieve those themes. So the first bullet, supporting flexible and engaging learning environments under supporting infrastructure, upgrading all classrooms to update their lighting, thermal and acoustic, and air quality environments with more user and teacher control, creating that healthier learning environment with good lighting, good air quality, et cetera. And then the themes at the top, again tied to the infrastructure below. Same thing for safety, health, and well-being. A number of key themes were developed and a list of supporting infrastructure for those themes. Sustainable environmentally responsible infrastructure, recognizing that in the Board's 8,000 policy that was adopted a couple of years ago, the district recognizes that climate change is real, and it is caused by human activity, and humans have a responsibility to improve our practices, improve our buildings, improve our lifestyles to lessen the impact of climate change. And so many of these items address that area. And finally, the support systems and services, this is a lot of the back-of-the-house stuff, but is really critical, the buses and other infrastructure, technology, et cetera, that we need to operate as a school district. Trustee Nelson?
Mr. Lautzana, this is a very useful overview. Will your slide deck be available to the public on the website?
Yes, absolutely. I didn't want to, I know there's a lot, I appreciate the question. Yes, this will be available. We'll have it posted in the next day or so, and I didn't want to be the guy who just read the whole slide, so I'm giving a recap, and those who are interested in the detail, I encourage them to go to the website and review it at their leisure.
And for those who may be watching right now, they could access it on Board Docs, which is right on the front page of the website, but here by tomorrow, we'll have it up in a prominent location so folks don't have to use Board Docs, if that's right.
And I agree wholeheartedly with your approach. The preparation of this summary is very useful, but it isn't something that should be read in detail.
Right, right.
Appreciate that, Trustee Nelson. Thank you. So now we'll start to jump into the plan and look at how some of the components. We'll review the components of the plan, the logic behind the timelines and the sequencing of the work, and then we'll look at specific timelines and projects on a school-by-school basis. So the plan is composed of five major components, the first one being early projects, early construction projects at every school within the first couple of years of the bond, focusing on equitable access to amenities and facilities. Summer construction projects, the construction of staging facilities, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail, but those are, that's locations where a school community would be relocated for some period of time so that major construction projects can be completed at their school, the kind of work that really isn't feasible or practical to complete in a 10-week summer recess. And finally, that's the supporting infrastructure, such as furnishings and equipment. So early construction projects will include, and again, this is based on, you know, making sure that everyone has access to the same amenities, so solar energy and other renewable energy sources, air conditioning and air quality improvements. Some of our schools are fully air-conditioned, many of them are not, so we'll focus in the early years on making sure everyone has access to air conditioning and better air quality, energy-efficient LED lights, outdoor learning enhancements, music, arts, science, and athletics improvements. One area that we're very excited about making improvements are small group and special needs learning spaces, and then continued replacement and enhancement of things like musical instruments and furnishings, our building management system, the bus fleet technology, and core infrastructure such as paving and stormwater and roofing systems. and core infrastructure such as paving and stormwater and roofing systems. Intermediate subject, summer projects are included in the plan for schools whose major project occurs later in the plan. They will provide custom design improvements for each school based on their particular needs. And care will be taken that we don't invest in something in a summer project that then we undo and lose that investment when we do a major project at that school. These are a couple of examples of summer projects that we've done. This is, on the left is Bryant Elementary, their media center, and on the right is the Pioneer Cafeteria renovation from two summers ago. Staging schools. Given how old our schools are and the extent of the work that needs to be completed, we need to temporarily relocate school communities in order to do the deep work at their home school. So the plan includes staging locations in each quadrant of the city to be utilized over the next 10 years to complete major projects at all of the elementary and K-8 schools. And we'll see a map of that in a minute. Major projects are really the heart of this bond-proposed plan. They're planned for every school to provide vibrant, sustainable, and programmatically-enhanced environments for this and future generations. As promised in the campaign, each community will have the opportunity to be engaged in the design process for their major project. And there will be developed considerations around whether to renovate a school, whether to replace a school or some hybrid of the two, where you would keep a portion of the building, perhaps the gymnasium and the cafeteria, but replace the classroom wings. The evaluation criteria will include academic program implications. So for instance, some of our buildings have been added on to so much over the years that things are not in a very logical location, and it's very far from one end of the school to the other end of the school, and the office isn't by the front door for some reason. And there's just academic and program implications that make it difficult to operate the school the way we'd like to in the 21st century. Of course, construction first cost is a consideration, as well as operating cost. Replacing a building would typically be a little bit more expensive than doing a deep retrofit, but that new building is going to have much lower operating costs than the renovated building. So that's something that we will be weighing. Impacts on health, well-being, and universal access. We, in the, in older buildings, if you did a deep retrofit, you might be looking at reusing things like older ductwork, older plumbing, as well as issues with universal access. We have a number of buildings that have a split-level entry. And so it's a, basically the front entrance is a half level up, and then there's a half level down. Makes it very difficult to have well-functioning ADA access to our buildings. So that's another consideration. And then on the side of environmental sustainability, one of the big considerations is carbon emissions. And we're very familiar with the concept of operating carbon. That's how much electricity and natural gas you use in a building and the emissions associated with that. There's also the embodied carbon in a building. And when you build a new building, you're adding embodied carbon with all of the concrete and steel that you're using versus reusing a building or a portion of the building, you're saving that embodied carbon, and you're not generating more emissions with new concrete and new steel. So those are some of the things that will be weighed during the consideration of major projects. And so how do we prioritize this work? We'll be looking at a couple of different factors. The capital investment needs. Dr. Swift alluded to the facilities condition assessment. We'll certainly be looking at that. Matriculation. We want to minimize the disruption to students' academic careers due to construction, so carefully thinking about how a student moves through their career at AAPS and helping them not be disturbed by construction too much. And then also housing development. Where are we seeing new houses, condos, apartments, et cetera, coming online and making sure that we're planning for that growth? So the facilities condition assessment, which was conducted by an outside organization, identified how much investment was needed by square foot per building. And we've kind of color shaded here. You can see at the top here, some of the schools with the highest need, Carpenter, Mitchell, and Dickens, Burns Park, Wines, towards the top of this chart. And that's where they need significant investment. And Allen, which was recently completely renovated, has the least need, and so is towards the bottom of this chart. Also Bryant and Patengill, which just went, underwent significant renovations, are also towards the bottom. So this informs the ordering of the work in the plan. In addition, I mentioned matriculation before. Recognizing on the previous slide that the highest level of need is at the elementary level. The plan begins with the elementary level, and then from there moves to high schools and then back to middle schools. And the reasoning for that is that if we went, if the plan went elementary, middle, high, then a fifth grader moving on to middle, who was at their elementary school in fourth or fifth grade, and it was renovated, and they were disturbed by construction, then they go to middle school, then they're disrupted again, and then a couple of years later, they go to high school, they might be disrupted a third time. So by going from elementary to high school to middle school, we minimize those disruptions. And recognizing that the middle schools come later in the plan, we have significant renovations for the middle schools early in the first four years of the plan. So the middle schools in the first four years would receive school-wide air conditioning and ventilation improvements, new lights and ceilings, and fire suppression systems, as well as other custom projects for each school based on their particular, particular needs. And finally, housing development is another big factor in how this plan was put together. We are updating the housing development study, and we'll have that in the beginning of 2021 to share with the board. This is, this is from the previous housing development study. And on this map, you see the elementary enrollment zones. The developments shaded in yellow are under construction currently, and those shaded in green are in the planning process with the city or township that they may reside in. We use this to anticipate the number of new students that we might need to accommodate in different areas. And so it's important to remember that though all but one of our schools are in the city of Ann Arbor, and the city of Ann Arbor is this dark red, the red piece in the middle, our attendance boundary reaches well outside of that area. And there are significant population centers, in particular Jackson Road corridor, Nixon Road over here, and, and going out, Packard and Washington towards Ypsilanti, significant amount of students that are in our attendance boundary, but they're outside of the city of Ann Arbor. So this is the Phase One Bond staging plan. So we've zoomed in now to just the inner part of this, so we can see our schools more clearly. But there is a proposed staging location in each quadrant of the city. And then the colors are the schools that would flow through the staging location. So the plan begins with construction of a new Mitchell Elementary School on the existing Mitchell site while Mitchell is occupied. And then the students from the current Mitchell School would move into the new Mitchell School. And from there, then first Burns Park, then Angel, then Pittsfield, and finally Patengill would spend a year at the old Mitchell while their home school would, received the major project renovation, new construction. And that, that plan proceeds then to the northeast sector, to the southwest, and concludes with the northwest sector. And so don't, don't feel that you have to squint and see all of this. There'll be individual slides for these later, but I wanted to just point out a few things in the overall plan. So these are the elementary schools on this side, and we have the southeast, northeast, southwest, and northwest sectors. And here is the new Mitchell. And once the new Mitchell is constructed, then a series of schools flow through that new Mitchell. The same thing here. Once this staging location is constructed, these schools flow through there. And there are other, there are some schools we don't, we feel that don't need to relocate to complete a major project, and they're a lighter blue. And then these are all earlier projects. And over here, these darker greens are those middle school early renovations that I mentioned. And we'll talk about Community High School at being the only high school without air conditioning is joining the middle schools in that air conditioning, lighting effort. So zooming in on the southeast sector, we see the, the project planning beginning next year for the new Mitchell Elementary. And then the construction of the school is shown here. And then Burns Park having the highest level of, a high level of need in the facilities condition assessment. Stages first, then Angel, then Pittsfield, and finally Patengill. And Allen and Bryant, we feel, don't need to stage, as well as Carpenter, so their major project would occur without a relocation. Regarding the early commitments, we have air conditioning and lighting projects. Patengill already has air conditioning installed this, just this last summer, so it's not receiving that. Air conditioning, outdoor learning enhancements, and then some of the other things like roofing, solar, and paving. And again, this will be on the website, available for people to study in more detail. The northeast sector is a little unique. There's some challenges there that, that make it not clear what the solution exactly is there. We have our professional team. We've developed a half dozen or so options. None of them seem like the perfect solution for the northeast sector. And so we've determined that 2021 will be a year where we conduct a feasibility study of, and evaluate each of those options and come up with a staging solution for the northeast sector. Once that's developed and available, we'll stage through Logan, King, and Thurston. And there are some early improvements at each of those schools. The southwest, the same basic concept, early air conditioning and lighting projects, and then a couple of major projects that do not need to stage. And once the staging location is constructed, then Eberwhite, Bah, and Lawton would stage through that location. And so the northwest sector is shown here with the K-8s, because the K-8s are significantly older buildings, and they do need a place to relocate to do the kind of deep work that, that those buildings need. So we have the early projects in the northwest and in the K-8s. Because these projects land significantly further on in the program, we've introduced intermediate summer projects in the northwest and the K-8s. So those are the kind of Bryant-Patengill renovations, the cafeteria renovation at Pioneer, those types of things to get some improvements there before the major projects, which are further out in the plan. So the middle schools, we have five middle schools in the district. They need a lot of work. And based on matriculation and some other considerations, their, their investment needs are not as great as some of the other, the elementary schools. But they do need some improvements. And so we have these significant renovations early in the program. These are essentially two summer mobilizations, starting with Scarlet and Tappan, and then moving on to Clegg and Forsyth, and closing out the program with Slosson. These would include completely new air conditioning systems, completely new ceilings, updating the technology infrastructure, fire suppression, and some other site-specific projects developed with, with the school leadership. And we have some other outdoor learning enhancements. And again, those intermediate projects, because some of these major projects end up quite, quite far down the road. We're starting to see this gray area. We're coming today with the 20, you know, the plan up to 2030 as what we're asking the board and the community to consider. But we've also sketched out what the rest of this program would look like, because it is a sort of a giant interlocking puzzle that you need to sort of see the whole thing in order to make a logical first 10 years. And then finally, or second to last, the high schools. Community High School is the only high school that does not have air conditioning in the school district. And we felt it was important that we, especially with it being a three-story building, it gets quite hot on the top, on the top floor of community. So air conditioning, lighting, fire suppression, and some other school-specific improvements. Other projects at Pioneer and Huron early on. Some work at Skyline. And one thing we're really excited about is completing a major project at Pathways. We know there was some renovation work done at Pathways, but that was, you know, when the district was very resource-strapped from a capital standpoint. So we did make some improvements in the past. Here, the vision is to really make this building, it's an older elementary school, to make it appropriate for high school students, for the big kids, and also to give it more of a community college feel. Give it that more of a professional, community college feel. And also get them a gymnasium, which is something that is really lacking in that school and the ability to get, you know, exercise and recreation and relax and all of that, and some other things. So we're really excited about the Pathways project. And then down the road, we have major projects for Pioneer, Huron, and Community. And for Skyline, which is only 12 years old, we have some summer projects worked in here to make sure that that building stays in good shape. And finally, some of our other buildings. We've got some improvements at preschool that I'm also really excited about getting. They have very limited outdoor recreation space, and those little bodies really want to move, and there's not a lot of place for them to do it. So we're excited to expand their outdoor learning environment. They also have some roofing needs, and we're planning to install some solar. Once the roof is completed, they'll need some paving, and then we have some summer projects for them. Continuing to enhance the Freeman Environmental Education Center. And then Ballis is, is an interesting one. Not only is there a new DTE substation firing up adjacent to the building. We feel with, with COVID, and we've all been working remote in our basements and our living rooms now for almost a year, that office work and life is going to be different post-COVID than it is now. And so we really want to take this time to study how our central office operates, how the departments interact, how we're going to operate in a COVID-informed future. And so we'd like to take 2021 to really study the central office operations and how we could maximize our efficiency effectiveness and also make it more, make it more accessible to the public. Right now, Ballis Building is kind of hidden down the hill, and now it's even more hidden behind a substation. So how can we really have that public presence be open and inviting to our community? And then finally, the transportation building. I doubt many people on this screen spend very much time in the transportation building, but we have hundreds of bus drivers that are there, you know, during normal operations for hours at a time, and it's, it needs a little love. So we've got a little bit there for our transportation workers. So I'll just review some of the other investments. This is that supporting equipment and technology, music, arts, and science, buses, technology, roofing, paving, and the building management systems. And a lot of these are seen not as... systems. And a lot of these are seen not as, we're going to do it at this school in this year, but this is just a commitment to continually refresh and keep updated some of our core infrastructure. Some primary investments, modernizing the rigging systems in our theaters, furnishings for art, music, and science classrooms. We, in the last several years, have replaced all the furniture in our core classrooms, but we did not address arts, science, and music rooms, and we would like to do that in this program. Musical instruments, continue those fresh, and also invest in storage systems for those musical instruments, and continue to update steam labs and make improvements in those. Continue to refresh our busing fleet. We received just this week the first of four electric buses that were subsidized by the VW Settlement Fund. We expect the other three shortly. We're very excited to try those out, and we will continue to learn from the technology and watch the technology. And if there's another opportunity to invest in those, we'd love to do that. On the technology side, investing in our infrastructure and security systems, refreshing the Wi-Fi, core network equipment, upgrading storage hardware, the data center needs some work, and being sure that we have systems and services that are user-friendly and have the proper security and data protection, and continue to refresh classroom technology and student and staff technology. One of the things that I'm very excited about, working in the facilities department, is updating our building management system and integrating these systems. So currently, the school district does have HVAC control, fire safety systems, door access system, exterior lighting, PA and emergency communications, but these are all on independent platforms, and many of them are proprietary. So it's very difficult to find multiple vendors able to service them. So we will be integrating into a unified, open-source building management system as we move through this bond program, so that it's all, you don't have to log in here to do this and log in there to do that. And there will be lots of vendors who are able to support these systems. We've also developed a multi-year roofing and solar improvement plan. We've been lucky to invest over $10 million in roofing in the last three years or so, which has put us in a really good place. But we've also worked with our roofing consultants to map out what the, what the next six years look like, so that we have a capital plan for roofing, and then following behind the roofing, solar installations on the new roofs as we go. We've done the same for our pavement and stormwater improvement. We've looked at it in a, in a long-term view, where are we going to need to invest two years, three years, five years from now? So community engagement. We, we will have a number of opportunities for community engagement in the next several months, and also throughout the course of this bond program. Some of those opportunities will include, over the next several months, we'll be conducting community organization presentations, reaching out to various community stakeholder groups and organizations to, you know, show them the plan and receive their feedback. We'll be conducting public town halls. We'll have a few topical presentations drilling down on things like environmental sustainability or health, safety, and welfare. We'll be doing some surveys. We'll be utilizing the thought exchange tool again, and we'll also be forming the Bond Advisory Committee and several bond working groups with application information becoming available in January. For the major projects at each school, we'll be forming school design committees to review and inform the design plans. We'll have a dedicated webpage at atoschools.org, and of course, there are always lots of information shared at Board of Education meetings. This is a look at the advisory committee structure. So the, the core of this is the overarching Bond Advisory Committee, but recognizing we have a lot of subject areas that need special thought and attention and deeper thinking. There will be a Board of Education representative on each of these working groups, and they are teaching and learning, sustainable and environmentally responsible infrastructure, and safety, health, well-being, and support systems and services. And there'll be key AAPS leads in each of these working groups. And those groups will begin to, to meet in April of next year. We'll be developing some additional information, including a COVID-informed design brief. One of the things that is really fascinating to me is all of the architecture and engineering community really has sharpened their pencils a lot over the last year or so in COVID response, and there's a lot of exciting new ways about thinking about indoor air quality in particular, and how we can make sure that as we move through this bond program, we're making the safest and healthiest environments possible. We'll be revamping or having a, an updated version of the housing development study. We'll be developing a communications plan, community feedback plan, and then various engagement materials. And so this is our progress and looking also at some of our next steps. We conducted the facilities condition assessment in 2018-19, and then we've been doing our preliminary work on the plan informed by the trustees and the bond committee. We've selected our bond management firm, and our AAPS staff and the professional team have been working on this plan throughout the year, informed by those bond commitments that I started the presentation with, as well as the facilities condition assessment. In June of this year, we had our first bond sale of $151 million. And in December, we have scheduled this board study session, a first and second briefing, and we'll be recommending approval of the 2020 bond plan from the board. And January through March will be our community engagement process, and we'll begin forming those advisory groups during that engagement. And then in April, we will come back to the board and report on the feedback from the community during the community engagement process. And then in spring of 2021, the advisory committee and working groups will commence their meetings. And I believe that is my last slide. So thank you, trustees, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lazana. Trustees, any questions? Let me make sure I pull up my participants. Okay. Either by show of your, your actual hand on the video or your blue hand, either way, if any questions. Trustee Nelson.
I want, I want to start by saying how exciting I find this. I think that this is a plan that will, excuse me. This is a plan that will make our community even more attractive than it is that I, I know people with very good reason have a lot of respect and appreciation for the education that goes on in our buildings. But I also know that when I talk to people new to the community, one of their reactions is, I really thought Ann Arbor would have better buildings. And I think this will improve our educational opportunities. It will be in education and sustainability, how it's done. And, and the most important thing is what happens to the children, which is good. But I also think this is going to be an investment for everyone who owns property in Ann Arbor that, that it's an investment that pays off to the entire community. I have, I may have another question later, but I'll start with one. I've noticed that the major project is laid out as a one-year project. I can imagine that being different. And am I correct that that's, that's a, it's a significant time, which is a placeholder for something that may or may not be exactly 12 or 15 months?
Yeah, that, that's a great point, and I, and I was remiss in pointing out the way that the chart was put together. Each year was broken into three segments, and that represents a fall semester, a summer, and a winter semester. So the, the construction timeline that we're, we're, we're trying to show is, is a, a full school year plus a summer on each end, which, which gives us about 16 months. And our professional consultants tell us that it's typical to plan for a 14-month construction window if you were going to do a brand-new elementary school, let's say. And, and a renovation would actually be a, a bit shorter than that timeframe. So for an elementary school, it's, it's, it's one full kind of school year, and the, and then the summers. But if you get into a middle school or a high school, these are much larger buildings. It would take longer than, than the one year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lightford.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the presentation. I agree with Trustee Nelson as far as the investment and the benefits that the continued investment in our buildings will provide. So ditto or kudos to that. I do think it's important that we really be creative in carrying the information to the public. The first thing they're going to ask is, didn't we just pass a bond? Wasn't it $1 billion? And why are you back again? And so those, that differentiation is absolutely necessary. In addition to that differentiation, helping show how this is a continuation of improved infrastructure, because oftentimes, we talk about the improved infrastructure, and the public may view it as, oh, Pioneer again, or Huron again, or Skyline. And we did touch that 12 years old, and we're doing those touch-ups too, or preventative type of measures. But I would love to see a visual per building showing what we did when, what we did in Pioneer with HVAC and coolers and chillers, and, and each of the different buildings. And so we help quail concern that we're not, any concern, how about that? We just, we're quailing concern, and we're helping, helping narratives be better informed. So really just be, I don't like the word transparent, because I think we always are, but I think the visual. I love what I saw with a visual you just had in the presentation. It was one with the building, and it showed all of the floors and the different components to the city, to the city, to, to the structure. I mean, that level of visual is really nice and, and helpful. The last question I had, though, I'm, I do appreciate the benefit of consolidating things under one control system, but I also am concerned about one control system. I think about our elections. Had our elections been federally ran versus the beauty and the difficulty in hacking them is because they are so dispersed, diverse, and different, and, you know, in multiple hands, which end up helping. So I, I would like to just be better assured that moving those systems for a building under one thing, whatever that thing is, wouldn't take just one quick hack and, and, you know, you shut down the whole system. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lazana, for, for this. The presentation's great, but the, the work that's been going on since that election day for this bond has really not been highlighted, because we've had so many incredible urgencies this particular year, and so many things that have been taking up the, the, all of the air in the room. But it, that, I, I hope that tonight people are really feeling reassured that while, while the pandemic and pandemic cooling have, may have been taking up all the air in the room, your team has been hard at work. This is, this is going forward from the bond sales and to, to the, the work around the thinking of, of all of this, you know, millions of square feet is, is, is happening. So I know everybody has some urgency, because it's such a big number, and people are eager to see the results of it. But this is, this is part of the process. It's, it's, it's where it should be. So, so thank you for that. I think you addressed it just a little bit, but I want to really put it out there. We don't have anybody in our buildings right now. Why aren't we doing all of this right now?
That's, that's a very good question. And the, the, I guess, and, and we do have slides to this, but I didn't, the, the construction process takes quite a bit of time. There, there's two factors. Just work of this magnitude takes a while to prepare for. And then we're also, we're a public agency, so we have additional time that, in the process. So, you know, the design timeline and everything for, even if in March we had said, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go hard at, you know, Tappan or something like that, we won't have, and, and in fact, we did launch the air conditioning and lighting process at Tappan in March with our design team. We're on the, we have that design now. It's on the street for bid as we speak, and it'll be to the Board of Education after the bidding process in either January or February. And then we have to procure all of this stuff, much, much of which has 12-week lead times, give or take, especially for HVAC equipment. And that basically puts us in the summer for a start date for that project, which we started in March. And that's a, that's a, you know, it's a, it's a large project, but it's not a, what I would call a major project in this, in this program. But I, I will remind people, we have been very actively working in our buildings on the COVID response, and our sinking fund and the CARES dollars from the federal government have really been helping us with that. And Mr. Rice has been deep in that work, commissioning all of our HVAC systems, so literally opening it all up, making sure everything's working, cleaning it, changing the filters one unit at a time, going through the district. We're converting all of our restrooms and other water sources to touchless operation, knowing that, that, you know, the splashing of water and the concern about aerosols and droplets are such a high concern. Making sure all of our bathroom exhaust fans work, getting rid of the forced air hand dryers in our restrooms, replacing those with touchless paper towel dispensers. Again, those forced air hand dryers. We'd like to think the kids do a perfect job of cleaning their hand, and when they stick them under that hand dryer, they're clean, but we know, you know, they're not perfectly clean, and that's a huge aerosol event when you stick your wet hands underneath a hand dryer. So we've been, we've been very actively engaged in our buildings in this downtime. We've also picked off some other projects, you know, that floor in the cafeteria that we just couldn't get to because it was always being used, or, you know, we've done some outside improvements, some erosion control improvements. Those are always difficult, because you, you get it, the dirt all where you want it, you put your straw mat down, you put the little fence up, and everybody just walks all over the grass and wrecks here. So, you know, without so many people on campuses, we're able to do some of that work. So we're, we're very actively engaged, but, and, and one of the nice things about the, the COVID-informed work that we're able to do now is, it's just generally healthier and safer in our buildings, whether it's COVID or it's flu, or it's the measles outbreak. By having our HVAC systems tuned and ready, by having the touchless operation of our water in our restrooms, we're going to be better off in the future, you know, when we return this year. this year or, or in some future year when there's a flu concern or COVID, COVID-20 comes along, we're going to be in a better place. But really, we'd love to dive into this work, but it, it, it just takes so much planning time, bidding time, procurement time, that we can't just say, okay, we're going to go build a new Mitchell right now. That's, that's a, that's a big planning process in front of that.
If I may add on to Mr. Lazana's answer to your question, just from the financial perspective, we simply cannot borrow $1 billion upfront. It would require a, a great debt load and it would impact our tax levies as well. So it's important that we keep the tax levy stable for our taxpayers so they can plan and know what to expect. And so we have planned our bond sales to reflect the need for cash over the course of these next years.
I really appreciate that. And, and I, I didn't want that question to sound like a setup to anyone. I mean, you've done such a great job in prior meetings, showing us the, the building readiness for COVID. But I think it's such a good reminder because it, it's, it's a, you know, one building is a big project. 35 buildings is just mind-bogglingly large. So, so thank you for, for the reminder of what's been going on, how the cash flow works and, and how significant construction projects like this just take time. My, my other question, I don't, I don't even know who the audience is, but it's about the Bond Advisory Committee and the work groups. I really appreciated seeing the part on the slide that said, you know, coming January 2021. I know people are eager to, to be part of that kind of oversight and input. So I'm, I'm glad to see that's kind of, you know, next on the list. But this might be a question for, for my, my fellow trustees, it might be for Dr. Swift. How, who, what's the selection process going to be? Will we set up criteria ahead of time for what we want the composition of those work groups to be in terms of representation from our different stakeholder groups? Will, will it be Dr. Swift's team who reviews applications? Will it be trustees who review applications? I just have a, a lot of questions around what that community advisory body looks like and, and how it's created.
We'll start on that. Thank you, Trustee Kelly, for that question. The board on your committees, you have been in deep discussion of our approach to the organization of the Bond Advisory Group over the previous year. And so I really appreciate all of that preliminary kind of sauces-making and thinking about the importance of having a community advisory group. So that's one component of it. Another piece are the work groups, those work groups. Trustees, you will recall back after the 2015 bond, we used a full bond advisory and community engagement process. And it actually served fairly well. So, and we learned a lot in that process. So those work groups will be, will be composed of Ann Arbor Public Schools team members. They'll be specific to the area, whether it's environmental, whether it's the teaching and learning. So it's the four cornerstones of the bond. So those work groups will be similar to what we've used before is that it's, the work group is populated by staff members who have particular interests or expertise, populated by parents and, and having a board representative affiliated and members of the bond committee may want to speak to that because we've talked about that quite a bit. The composition of the advisory group overall, the board has discussed a lot about that and will continue that discussion, I know. But ensuring that representatives from each of the work groups are a part of the advisory group because we don't want those work groups operating in silos. And then the board has discussed in our preliminary conversation, other community leaders sitting alongside those work group representatives. And then a trustee liaison to each of those three, those three work group teams. So I'm not sure the trustees, Nelson and Lazarus and Gaynor are the ones who've been busy on this. I don't know if you all want to add to that kind of quick overview or not.
Trustee Nelson.
I might add that a third very important group will be at the school level for especially major projects. So as people think about the opportunities to get involved, if what they're, say, very much interested in is their neighborhood elementary school, especially if it's a major project, that may be the right group for them rather than the district-wide groups, which are also very important. There is no one more important than the others. That's just a third very important planning group that will help us to be in touch with people in the community and have a good dialogue between the professionals and the citizens.
Thank you, Trustee Gaynor.
Thank you. Yeah, even though I've been on the bond committee or working group, you know, and I've been following this all along, this is still such an immense plan, so many parts to it. And yeah, I was going to say, but you got to it. I know the public's interested in their love, you know, their participation, their engagement. And that's been mentioned here, but very much looking forward to that to reassure that, you know, all of the issues from sustainability on are going to be covered and, and people won't have a chance to weigh in, make sure we, we stay on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lazarus. You're, you're muted, Trustee Lazarus.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sound like Verizon. I just want, thank you. I just wanted to just follow up and agree with everything that Dr. Swift said and also Trustee Gaynor and Trustee Nelson about the whole structure of how we're planning to get, the board is going to get information and feedback from our community. Our community is so important to hear from. And like Dr. Swift said, our whole goal of setting up the structure of the advisory committee in the bond committee was to make sure that we are not within our, we aren't in silos. We want to be, have cross-communication between all the various, because this is about improving education, not only from the student's educational experience, but also to the actual environment that they're learning within and that it's safe and healthy. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that on these work groups, that there was a board representative on the work group so that it wasn't like reeducating the, the, the administration wasn't reeducating the bond and the board committee every time they met again. And it was more time efficient. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the bond committee, this is a huge project. And I agree with Trustee Gaynor that it's, it's a big project to get our hands around. And we've been working all summer long on the bond committee. And even though we've, Emil, Mr. Lazano and Gilbain Committee and Ms. Minnick have put a lot of work into this project, there will be changes and there will be parts and pieces that move. But we will definitely do it in the best interest of the district and of all students. And the way to get involved is to come and to, all of those things that were on that list. I mean, there's many, many ways that the community can have their voices heard. So I just wanted to reiterate that the board is going to be an active part in this whole process. So, thank you.
I just wanted to, to thank the, those trustees who are on that bond committee for replying to that concern because, you know, I'm, I'm not on that committee, so I don't hear what everybody does at those meetings. But it sounds like it's really been thoughtful about the, the importance of, of that, of, of the way it's structured and, and ensuring representation and cross-pollination. So that's great. And, and I'm looking forward to see how that comes together. I, I would just share something that's important to me back to that committee, which is that, that, that we're, we're ensuring representation in those work groups and, and the overall advisory committee and the school groups when we consider that folks who have applied to, to sit on those. And that we ensure that those people on those committees and those work groups are there at square one. They're helping inform the values and the visions that the, the architects and, and the engineers are going forward to, to make drawings for. Because it, it would be a shame if we brought in our community too late in the process and ended up needing to make major changes then to, to, you know, go back to something that, that needs to be edited after the input of, of, you know, a particular work group perspective. So thank you all for how much you've been thinking about the, the, the community involvement already. And I'm, I'm really eager to see where it goes and, and how we do this. You know, all, all together as the group who, who made this bond happen. So thank you. Trustee Baskett, it's all you.
Thank you. That's a great segue to, to me just saying, this is not clear to me. For the public to know, we've all been briefed in, in many meetings, if you will, to, before this meeting of all of us. And that question has come up and still has not been clarified. I know the committee will work on clarifying that. But let me just stress that while there is representation on whatever committee, work group, whatever we're going to call it, it is the board that will receive the information and the board that will be approving or clarifying things, if you will. So I, I'm still not sure, work groups, committees, whatever. And I look forward to seeing that in writing to help me clarify that in terms of representation and all the questions that you raised, Trustee Kelly. So I appreciate you raising them before me. I do want to stress to each of us that this is a lot of work, having survived a couple of these projects, campaigns, whatever we want to call it. As others have mentioned, things could change, which is why it's always important to have clarity and understanding as things move along. Also, understanding the projects, thank you to the team for these detailed, this detailed report with the charts. Very helpful in, in terms of timeline. But as we know, with construction, whether you've done it personally or professionally or school level, there are always, always surprises. And sometimes that sets us back. Sometimes it, you know, offers opportunities we didn't know that we had. So again, these are plans. Nothing has been etched in stone in terms of, you know, we're not in there yet. And Mr. Lazano is a professional, can probably share a whole bunch of horror stories, if you will, of surprises that, that have come up. So to the community, though, I think we are, I know we're committed to making sure that the community knows what happens as we go along. Do not, do not want to hear anything of lack of transparency on this. We have the report, trustees, I really encourage each of you, each of us to download the report and carry it with you, if you, so to speak, so that it will help address some questions. Again, in the land of COVID, we're probably not going to have as many personal interactions as we may have had in the past, but be prepared. And to the community, my question here, I apologize, that my question here to the team is, should someone want to be more involved in the process? Trustee Gaynor, or sorry, Trustee Nelson had explained, you know, the school level, the district level. But should someone want to, so this question, I guess, will go to Mr. Lazano and Dr. Swift. Someone from the community wants to get more involved, so to speak, and, and helping, lending his or her time, who should they communicate with?
Thank you for that question, Trustee Baskett. We will be rolling out an application process during the first quarter of the year. And that will be the January, February, March timeline. We want to convene the public tour that Mr. Lazana referenced so that folks who may have an interest can attend those meetings and learn and gain more information. So we will be rolling out that process with the goal to have committees set by the, by March, so that they can begin meeting later in the spring. What's important first is to give, for everyone in the community to participate in any of those ways that we listed. And we'll be adding more ways through the thought exchange, through the virtual meetings, through the K-12 insight surveys. We'll be doing lots and lots of work so that everyone gets to engage. And then as folks learn more about what the roles are on, on any of the various committees and they learn more about what the time requirements might be, then we'll begin to receive those applications for folks to participate. As Trustee Nelson noted, however, folks will have opportunities around the district-level work committees and advisory group that will be designated into the cornerstones of the bond. And they will also have opportunities at their own neighborhood school when we get ready to do the major projects. So we'll be putting together all of that information here over the next few weeks so that folks can be considering and learning and think about what role they may want to participate in.
Thank you.
Trustee Nelson.
I want to make one comment and then a question of sorts. My comment is that I think it's worth taking a moment to remember one of our first steps, the sale of the first bond series was a fantastic success. And it's always nice to have good first steps in a big process so that, just want to take that moment to, to note that our team made a very good first sale of the bond and got us, one of the first steps started very right. My second area is that I think what will be most difficult or, well, most exciting and full of opportunity, but also some hard choices, will be this decision between renovation and construction. And that I'm sure there are going to be many good discussions of that. I think I like one thing about this plan, but I'll be interested in the reaction as to whether I have this correct. That the Mitchell site is both very important. We know it needs a new building. And we know it's somewhat easier because it will be built adjacent to it. And the students and staff can just move that short distance. The nice thing to me is that you're putting that early in the plan means we are going to have a new building, which people can come and look at and see what does a modern, environmentally sensitive building built to provide excellent education look like? And then when they go back to their own neighborhoods, where is, there's this discussion of should we keep the old building? we keep the old building or should we have a modern building attractive? That, that will provide a place to, to go. So it's not only important in its own right, it's something of a demonstration project that other people can see what does a new building look like? Does that, did I understood the sequence correctly? So that's a feasible thought?
That is absolutely correct. Mr. Lazzano, you want to jump in there?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, that's a very astute comment. You know, we're looking at Mitchell, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wins there. I mean, Mitchell is one of our highest needs in terms of capital investment. We've, we've added modulars twice to Mitchell because of the growth and population in that area. And we're fortunate to have quite a lot of open land at Mitchell. I coached, you know, rec and ed soccer for a number of years and we'd always have soccer games over there and there'd be, you know, I don't know, seven soccer games happening concurrently in the, in the big open field there. Don't worry, we have lots of places to play soccer in the district if we build a building there. And, and it is intended to be a demonstration of what a new building built to a set of APS design standards will look like. And I could quickly to the, to the, the advisory committees, one of the early pieces of work that, that our professional team is starting to work on and we're looking forward to sharing with and, and being informed by the working groups in the bond advisory committee is, it is a design standards document that talks about energy efficiency expectations, daylighting expectations, air filtration expectations, material selections, safety and security systems and all of this. So we're, we're kind of in the background preparing some options for discussion with these committees about, you know, where, where are our priorities? What, what does security look like? What does environmental sustainability look like? What do our, our playscapes at our elementaries look like? We've recently done a, a couple of more natural unstructured play environments, we call them. And as opposed to traditional sort of, you know, out of the catalog play equipment, you know, is that something we want to start seeing at, at our new or our, our major project elementary? So we're really excited to work with the design committee and also, I'm sorry, with the, the bond advisory committee, the working groups and the Mitchell School Design Committee on this first sort of out of the gate project and really try to not lock down, but sort of define some general parameters that are goals for this program moving forward for future major projects and demonstrate that, as you pointed out, to the community so they can see the, the sort of what if scenario when, when their turn comes in the program.
Thank you. It truly is exciting.
Thanks trustees, any other questions? All right, I have a couple. So well, first a comment, you know, I want to echo what a lot of trustees said here. Great work all the way around. I think this is, this is giving us some great detail. I, I really love the, the timelines. I think that makes it really easy to understand a few things. One, Mr. Lazzano and, and Dr. Swift and trustee Nelson mentioned the, this major projects piece and, and how, how there will be an opportunity for, for people to get involved at the school level. And what, what I liked, what I liked about it is I can see it that maybe my school isn't going to get started until, you know, 2024. So if I don't hear something next year about, you know, starting that committee, it's okay because that's, that's coming in 2024 when you might need my input. So, so I, I definitely like that. I also, one thing that I also wanted to mention to the, to the community and make sure that this is clear, as it was alluded to, is that, you know, we, we definitely want to make sure that the community is engaged throughout the whole process and, and we've, you know, at least started this, to, to create this structure and it sounds like there needs to be a little bit more detail about how the, the individuals are selected, et cetera, to get that input and to bring the community along. It will be the responsibility for this board and future boards to make the final decisions on this. So I, I think that sometimes we get this, this kind of belief that, you know, if we're going to pick out the tile for the roof, that, that we're going to go out for a vote for what tile goes on the roof, it won't be, the community won't be involved at that level. Community will be able to give, give some insight, but at the end of the day, the board members in, in the, in the, in the, the teams will have to make those decisions. So, and I, and I think trustee Nelson's point about renovation versus new construction is, is going to be a big one as someone that's lived here for a long time, you know, I do understand how, how, how the idea of having brand new buildings everywhere isn't what everybody is going to want. And so what we will have to, you know, balance the, the, the wants and desires and the, the emotional attachment that we have to these buildings with some of the costs and the sustainability from a, from a financial sustainability standpoint and a environmental sustainability standpoint and those, those types of things. So I did want to make sure that we're clear about that, that we want that, that engagement. But, you know, the school board, the school board and the school boards going forward will be, be making those, those final decisions with, with input from the community. I had a question and this is getting to Ms. Minnick's point about the, the, the debt load and, and what we're able to borrow at what time and, and we, and I did see on one of the slides, you had $151 million for the series one bond sale. What, so, so how, how far will that series of bond sales get us? And to, and, and how is that related to whatever plan we're asked to approve as a board? So are we saying that we're going to go through a, a first briefing, second briefing on this plan for the board and, and that's just kind of laying out for 30 years? But that's, but that's approving a budget that's going to be for this $151 million from the bond sale? Or are we saying, hey, we're, this is going to be our approach that we're approving and then the, the budget will, will vary per year and, and there are going to be some other variables there?
That latter part, trust president Johnson, I appreciate that question. The latter part was exactly right, is that the intention of this December work is to approve a preliminary draft of the 20-year plan. That draft has been informed by Ms. Minnick's. She's kept a budget eye on that, as has the team, but this is, this is not an intention to approve the budget in May.
Absolutely. Okay. Perfect. And I saw Ms. Minnick came, came off you, I didn't know if there was something else there. Sorry.
Dr. Swift answered it fine. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. No, I, I, again, I think that it's great work and appreciate it. And I know that you're doing a whole lot, but as, as usual, it's strong work and, and much appreciated.